Mr. Nahal, can you lead us to the flag?
I'd like to lead. It's the flag of the United States of America. Considered republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces, and this Saturday is Armed Forces Day. Thank you. And our first thing is we're going to be doing certificates of recognition. If we could pass these down this way, Walter, take a look at this one.
I'm close.
And these are our wonderful Girl Scouts. What they did was they made some picnic tables for Sarah Noble School. And for those that you see, they did an outstanding job, absolutely beautiful. And they invited me to take a look at them, and I said, you know, ladies, this is awesome. This is sport of the town, right, ladies? So the town wants to recognize you for doing a good thing for our town. We want to thank you for that. So I know there's a couple that are here today and a couple can't be here today. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read everybody's name, and then we're going to read one of the recognitions. Okay? So if you girls could come on up here, come on up. And, all right. So the town of New Milford would like to recognize the Girl Scouts. And I may say this wrong, Elise Dahl, Hannah Amaretto, Reese Waters, getting all stuffed, and Sidney Schamber, right? For troop 40255, for their donation of three picnic tables for Sarah Noble Intermediate School. Your troop was involved from the start to finish, from picking out the wood, putting everything together, and finally decorating it. Thank you for your hard work, contribution, and dedication for our wonderful town. We are very, very proud. Great job, ladies. Let you bring these over. Which one is yours there? That's mine. Yours. This one's yours. And I'll give the other ones to mom, maybe it's you. Do them. And, yep. There you go. Great job, ladies.
Pete, I just touched you in the picture.
Oh, thank you. Next public comment, sir. Oops, I'm sorry, I've got one last thing. Sorry. Okay, all right. So this week is National Public Works Week. Okay? So we're doing a proclamation like we did last year for National Public Works Week. It's thank goodness for public works. They take care of our roads, especially when it's snowing, right? So whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, parks, open spaces, and public services are vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of the residents of the town of New Milford. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of our public works professionals who operate and maintain the public buildings, roads, parks, and infrastructure townwide. And whereas it has been demonstrated that public works provides critical response capabilities, experience, and support to all levels of government and town agencies in times of natural and man-made disasters. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders of this community to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in the public works needed programs and employees. And now therefore, our Chief Base Mayor of the town of New Milford, of New Milford, do hereby designate the week of May 19th through the 25th as National Public Works Week. We urge all of our residents to join the representatives of governmental agencies and the American Public Works Association in activities and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works employees and recognize the substantial contributions of health and welfare they provide daily on a local national level. Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right, I got Irene. Irene, 205 Pumpkindale Road. I couldn't quite read your last name.
Thank you for not including the lady's name.
Well, this is kind on my part. Thank you.
All right. I wasn't entirely sure this was a town issue, but it actually is, so I'm going to mention it. As of April 4th, the U.S. As of April 4th, the U.S. has confirmed 465 cases of measles. That's more than all the cases in 2018. As of May 3rd, that number went up to 764. Today, 10 days later, it's 839, and that's double last year's count. This is the largest outbreak since health officials declared measles eliminated in 2000. A milestone that was largely due to widespread vaccination. Measles is highly contagious. You're susceptible if you haven't been vaccinated. You can catch it in a room two hours after someone with measles has left. If someone with measles is around a bunch of people who haven't been vaccinated, 90% of them are going to get sick. About one child in every 1,000 who gets measles will develop encephalitis, swelling of the brain, which can lead to convulsions, deafness, or intellectual disability. One out of every 20 children will get pneumonia, which is also deadly. Several states currently permit religious exemptions from vaccines, even though the Constitution does not require them to do so. Given the health risks of unvaccinated children, primarily infants who cannot get the measles shot prior to 12 months, and people with compromised immune systems, and this, not to mention for the fiscally minded, if you can't look at the humanitarian issues. The skyrocketing financial burden put on states due to vaccine-preventable illnesses. It's time for the states to change their laws so their fringe religious objections do not get in the way of protecting the safety of our communities. Restriction of religious exemption is compelling under the context of human rights. Article 25 of the U.N.'s Universal Declaration of Human Rights says that, this is a quote, "Everyone has the right to a standard of living adequate for health and well-being of himself and his family, including medical care." Surely, if we have the ability to prevent life-threatening illness from harming a child, we should give that child protection. I'm pretty sure all of us can agree on that. To infringe on religious freedom for the well-being of a child is not unprecedented. There is legislation against child marriages, although child marriage was actually legal in Connecticut prior to 2017, which I find disturbing. But it's illegal now, thank goodness. So why do so many states still allow religious exemptions for vaccination? Restricting all non-medical exemptions, which, hold your hands, this is pretty crazy. The strategy is actually enacted in, of all places, West Virginia and Mississippi, two places that I would not think of forward-thinking, but actually are. And California is permitted under the First Amendment because free exercise of religion is not absolute. I'm sure our Esquire here can refer us to Prince v. Massachusetts, which said that a parent cannot claim freedom of compulsory vaccination for a child more than for himself on religious grounds. The right to practice religion does not include the liberty to expose the community or to the child to communicable disease, or the latter to ill, health, and death. None of the country, not to mention, none of the country's largest religions prohibit the use of vaccines. And only a small handful of minor religions, Christian Science and Dutch Reformed Congregation, among several faith-healing denominations, resists vaccination due to theological objection. And just as an aside, the Christian Scientists had a school in Darien, and in 1972, they had an outbreak of polio. Like, we even knew that polio was around in the United States in 1972. Two kids were paralyzed and 11 fell ill. Okay, let's bring it local. New Milford has schools with immunization rates below the CDC 95% standard of measles, mumps, rubella for the 2017-2018 year. I'm sure you've probably all read the report, and you're familiar with this. And you know which schools they are. Some of the exemptions are for medical reasons, which is understandable, but many are for religious exemptions. Now, how do you get a religious exemption? You download a form and you fill it out. Nobody asks you which Dutch Reformed school you go to, or anything about Christian Science. You don't, nothing from a pastor, nothing. You just download it and fill it out. So why am I going in?
Irene, you have four minutes, please.
Why am I going into this now? It seems several state representatives and senators feel that their religious exemptions should be upheld at the state level, putting our most vulnerable citizens at risk. I have a copy of the letter, and they sent it to the Attorney General. The thought that these folks do not understand what's at stake, and a disease like measles that can cause pneumonia, encephalitis, and death in infants and children, and yes, in adults, is mind-boggling to me. Last month, Bill Buckview was here talking about the danger of vapors. Maybe he should think about the dangers of measles and the unvaccinated kids that will be subject to this if, because of his position on religious exemptions, which is basically a sham. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene.
Okay, talk to him about it, because it will come back.
Seamus McCann, please.
I'm Seamus McCann, live on Arcadia Lane, which is a private road off of North Road. I'd like to talk to you about the town's decision to use North Road as the detour for Squire Hill. It's a dirt road, it's narrow, there are blind turns on it, there are blind hills on it. I was thrilled to see that speed limit signs of 15 miles an hour were put up. That doesn't stop many of the drivers who are too busy trying to get wherever they're going. I have been almost hit while walking my dog, and I might mention, every morning, my wife and I walk all of North Road and Mind Hill Road and back to our house with our dog. We see just about everything. Yes, I'm out there telling people to slow down, I get the finger. I was almost hit while walking, our dog's been almost hit while we've been out. This past weekend, I was coming back from kayaking up on Lake Warimug, had a boat on my roof, drove down North Road, and at one point, below the intersection with Old Mine, there is a blind turn. I went around that at about 10 miles an hour. Another car was coming the other direction, slammed on the brakes, stopped six inches apart. Told me to go to hell, basically. Reminded him that the speed limit was 15 miles an hour on the road. Now I hear that we're going to repair the bridge on Tamrec Road. And the initial comment was, we'll probably just use the North Road detour. I don't understand why we're using North Road when you've got West Meeting House. It's paved, there are stop signs at the end, there are no blind corners. We don't have any of the risks. Basically, I'm begging you to rethink this one and to think about changing the detour. I don't know how much longer Squire Hill will be under construction. Certainly needs it, but there will be a problem on North Road. I'm certain of it. I was at our neighbor's house two weekends ago, walked out from their house on the corner of North Road and Old Mine, walked over, crossed the road, crossed Old Mine to get my car, and was almost hit by a car coming down Old Mine at a fairly high rate of speed for that kind of conditions. So I would just ask you, please, please, take a look at what the alternatives are. And if there is a viable alternative, let's consider it. The other incident, walking northbound on North Road. We had somebody come by, I was out in the road, said, just slow down. He cursed me, gave me the finger, and then accelerated going up over a blind hill. I hate to say this, and I mentioned it to Mayor Bass this afternoon, but I kind of wish that maybe the town grader was on the other side of that hill, because he would have learned very quickly he was going too fast. But too many people are getting away with it. Big trucks, big trailer trucks going up North Road. And it's not wide enough for a car to pass a trailer truck. So if you give that some attention, we would all appreciate it. There are many others who walk on that road as well. It's one of New Milford's beautiful scenic roads. And right now, I think it's a big problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Seamus.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Steve Looney, please.
Good evening, folks. Steve Looney, 55 Ford Ice Road. I wasn't really going to speak, but Walter had missed my charming voice, so he asked that I sign up.
No, thanks, Walter.
I really wanted to speak because I actually wanted to speak about how good our neighbors are. I mean, we just had two people talk about it, about people need to slow down, how people need to curb their religious freedoms, their thoughts. My son, stepson, just returned from his military service, and this weekend, a group of people whom we don't know welcomed him home on the Green. There was 100, 130 people there, the mayor was there, many other people were there. It was very nice. It was raining, it didn't matter. It didn't dampen anybody's enthusiasm from a little girl of maybe five years of age handing him a box of candy and welcoming him home. He didn't know the girl. It was nice. We live in a great town.
Steve, thank you. Steve, if I may make a comment, I'm sorry I missed that because I was not available, but I would have loved to have been there. Thank you, sir. By the way, RA 11383112, sir.
That's the end of the list, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Walter. Next is Mayor's remarks. A few things. First, Mr. Looney just mentioned it, but I want to thank the Yellow Ribbon Committee, who put on the welcoming of Sergeant Lynch, Marine Sergeant Lynch. As stated before, we had well over 100 people there, and it was great to see. We had Jeff McBriarty, who's the American Legion Commander, Jim Delancey, who is the VFW Commander. We had numerous servicemen that were there as well, as well as the public to welcome home one of our New Milford brethren. And we thank him, Mr. Lynch, for his service, as well as everyone, including yourself, Walter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next, I'd like to thank the Northville Fire Department for their Mother's Day breakfast. They do this annually, and they put on a great breakfast, and I could tell you firsthand, it was a very good breakfast, so I thank them for that. This week is National Skilled Nursing Week. Basically, that is, we're honoring those nurses and CNAs that work in the retirement homes. Canowood Valley, Village Crest, also the nurses in the VNA, Genrod Nursing, and New Milford Hospital, to just name a few. So we thank them for taking care of our loved ones when they can't take care of themselves. So we thank them for that, because that's what the community's all about. Farmer's Market opened this past weekend. I'm a sucker for Ever Farms Donuts, those, the cedar donuts, those things are good. And just wonderful to see all the people coming in and partaking, as well as our merchants, they come in and partake. And they're open from 9:00 to 12:00 on the Green on Saturdays, so we thank them for opening up. As Walter was saying a little bit earlier this evening, Goat Days, it's the greatest of all town, is having Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 to 5:00 down on Young's Field. So we hope that our residents can make it there to celebrate best town in the USA, New Milford. I'd like to thank everyone that came to the Coffee with the Mayor this past Saturday. It's great to hear your input, and we thank you. Next, I'd like to give a brief update as we're doing our Lindemming Safety Project. So we're continuing on with that. The actual lanes where the gates, the new security gates are putting up, they're almost completed with that. They're bringing in the Wi-Fi and also the computerization. So this will be done, according to Dan Calhoun, well before opening day, which is Memorial Day. I've also asked the New Milford Police Department on Memorial Day weekend to add additional security, come into the park numerous times, to just check and make sure. Ever Source has been gracious to close off the top piece there, so we're not going to have people parking and walking in. So it's good to see that our investment is a secure investment. And for those that want to pass, you can go down to the Park and Rec, pay your ticket, and love to have you there. And I want to thank the Park and Rec Commission and Dan Calhoun for their hard work on that. Next is a brief roads update. As Seamus talked about before, we are working on, as we speak, on Squire Hill. Unfortunately, the rain has kind of pushed us back a little bit. Mill and pave will be due as soon as we get some, the milling part of the road, the drainage is completed. Now the milling is the next, to bring it down to the subbase. When we get a nice day, hopefully, we can get that taken care of. We're looking at a end date for Squire Hill, end of October, beginning of November for completion. Long Mountain Road for the part that needs the top course. We're actually looking to put that top course on within the next couple of weeks, all weather-dependent on that. We're continuing to work with our design engineer team for the nine major roads that we are working on over the summer and the fall. Hopefully, we'll have the final design back from the design engineers by the end of the week so that we could put those out to bid. Also, to let you know too, within our program, we're looking to do 26 miles of chip seal and additional mileage for crack seal as well. So I want to thank our DPW team and design engineers all for their hard work in moving that forward. Also, an update with the New Milford Police Department. So one thing is they're being very vigilant on is looking at traffic control, speeding. So you're going to see them out more often, especially during times when we see a lot of that. Also, just so everyone is aware, there's going to be a major emphasis on when the buses on Route 7 are pulled over to let students in and out. If there is not a divider, you are to stop. If you do not stop, the police are going to hand you a $400 ticket. So it's very important that we are going to be extremely vigilant, and that's going to be a big effort on the part of the police department to enforce that. So for those watching on the livestream, please make sure you stop in the opposite direction or in back of the bus when it's got its red lights on. If there's not a divided highway, you need to stop. If not, you will get a ticket. Lastly, our budget referendum. We go to the polls on 5/21, and the polls are open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I hope we all can do our efforts for our town and go out and vote your conscience, how you feel it should be. The more representative that we are, the better. And that's all I have.
Make a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Consent agenda, make a motion that the town council approve the following item, regular town council meeting minutes of April 22nd, 2019.
Second.
One question, Mayor.
Yes.
The last four items are all about road closures and all.
Yes.
Any reason why those weren't put on the consent agenda?
We had a fellow councilman in the beginning when we were doing the consent agendas, asked that we put them on singularly. And if it is okay with the council, then with a motion, we could add those on to the consent agenda and then move them forward.
Well, I had a couple of questions on, I have 11, not that, you know, not that far ahead, but you have some questions on, just because that's a new one. The other one is, you know, the continuing one to the tab, so I'm fine with that.
Well, my point is, you can pull anything you want off of consent agenda, one person, you don't need even two, so. My point is, those should just be on consent agenda, then anybody who wants to pull it off, but they're not on there tonight, that's fine. Did you get a second on the consent agenda?
Walter, I've worked for a minute.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Thank you.
Make a motion to, for the following appointment to the zoning commission, appoint Ron Evans, Republican alternate, for a term of May 13th, 2019, to January 31st, 2022.
Any discussion, and Mr. Evans is here?
Does this fill in the role, or?
Yes. So is a vacant Republican alternate seat on zoning?
And it goes till 2022?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Parks right here, if anybody has any questions. Mr. Evans, I'm sorry.
Want to come down, say a few words, or? All right.
Thanks, Walter.
Well, you're welcome.
I appreciate it. About a year and a half, I came to say I want to really help the town, and this is a great post, and I'm very appreciative of getting the honor being brought forward. I hope to do my best in this role, and if anybody has questions, concerns, I am always free to be available and discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
Upstate.
Okay. Thank you, Ron.
That was painful, Ron.
Make a motion to appoint the following members to the Municipal Buildings Committee. For first, for terms of May 27th, 2019, to January 31st, 2022. The following four people, Ronald Schlessinger, Republican, Robert Beebe, Republican, Timothy Clark, Democrat, Charles Bogey, Republican. And for the term of May 27th, 2019, to January 31st, 2020, Chris Gardner, Republican, Brandon Merritt, Libertarian, John Rosa, Unaffiliated.
Second.
Second.
Briefly, all of these individuals all have extensive building experience and knowledge, and I think they'd be a wonderful attribute to our town as we move forward in helping us on our municipal, both on the town and the Board of Enside, municipal building projects. Any further discussion? Dr. Muller.
Just some questions about the committee itself, not about the appointees. Just to clarify, is this committee allowed to negotiate contracts?
No.
They just watch, like, have to track them, make sure?
Correct.
And they're now allowed to award any contracts?
That's through the town bidding process.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. All right, thank you.
Works for me.
One last question. Any reason why there are no women on this committee?
I just went by the ones that wanted to be on the committee. It'd be great. I'm actually going to ask the council at our next meeting to see if we can actually expand this committee by a few people. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So next, we have the, we're going to be looking at resolutions for bond, for bonding. I think it's important as a council, as we kind of see where we are in the process. So we have Greg, our finance director, and we have Barry, who's our financial analyst, our consultant. And I've asked Barry to come in a little bit today to give us a brief overview on where we are as far as our debt and how we have the ability to use the same debt dollars that we have today without increasing our debt dollars to be able to get these capital projects that are so desperately needed done. So Barry?
Good evening, Barry Bernabi. As Mayor said, the town's financial advisor, works very closely with the finance director and the mayor whenever the town issues for capital projects. Before we look at the actual debt overview, there's two main drivers that determines a municipality's borrowing cost. a municipality's borrowing cost. The first slide is, is the overall level of interest rates. This chart here is a little bit busy, but what it plots is the uh, the, the yield on the ten-year U.S. Treasury bond, which is a benchmark for all long-term borrowing costs. That chart goes back fifty years, and interest rates peaked in nineteen eighty-one, which is that green circle up on top. Since then, they've been coming down, and they bottomed out in two thousand sixteen. And on the far right-hand side of, of, of the graph there, you can see where we are today. Long story short with this is, we're not at all-time lows, but we're, we're just off all-time lows. So this bodes well for uh, for uh any community that needs to borrow or issue bonds. Let's go on to the next one. Um, the second factor that determines a municipality's borrowing is your bond rating. So the two main rating agencies are Standard and Poor's and Moody's. The first column is the Standard and Poor's uh rating scale, and the, the one to the right is the Moody's rating scale. Triple A is the highest. New Milford is rated one notch uh below the highest rating possible, but it's our goal this year to, to go for that, that triple A. I think we have a good uh, or the town's in a good position for that. Uh, it's a double A plus from Standard and Poor's and double A one from Moody's. So with such a high bond rating and overall level of interest rates, that bodes well for getting a very low uh borrowing cost. So what determines a, a municipality's bond rating? There's really five different factors. I got them listed up there. They'll get management practices, how much discipline a municipality has, putting the budget together, generating surpluses. I think this is a big positive for the town. Town's very strong financial position, high fund balance uh ratios, um good budget discipline, so bodes well for number one. They'll, they'll look at your economy, your demographics, unemployment rate, your financial performance, debt management, and long-term liabilities. Now that long-term liabilities is becoming more and more of a problem, especially for states such as Connecticut, with these long-term healthcare costs and pension costs starting to eat up more and more of the operating budget. But again, uh, New Milford's in a, in a good position with all of these factors. So when we look at, at, at the town's current borrowing plans, currently the town has about seven point three million dollars of, of bands, bond anticipation notes, that are coming due this July. Uh, when those notes mature in July, the town is planning to pay down about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on the outstanding road projects and um add another uh two million dollars to that of already authorized road projects, for a total of about eight point eight million dollars. We're looking to do a permanent financing this summer. And then in addition to that, um, as the mayor said, the town is looking to approve twenty-three point five million dollars of, of, of new projects with a net cost to the town after the expected library donations and grants of about twenty-one point five million dollars. So if we go on to the next chart, uh, this graph right here is a um, it illustrates the town's existing bonded debt service payments. And the good news here is, if you look at that, that arrow, the, the, the town's debt amortizes very aggressively. That's a wonderful chart to me as a financial advisor, because a lot of communities, when you issue bonds, you could actually push it all off for future administrations to worry about. New Milford historically has never done that. That, that debt is amortizing aggressively, and that can be used to mitigate any new debt service, if you're gonna see them a lot. So if we go on to the, the next chart, we see that exact same chart, those blue bars again are the town's existing bonded annual debt service payments. Those little red bricks, proposed new debt service, is the roughly eight point million dollars we're looking to bond in July, plus the twenty-one point five million dollars of proposed new capital projects. So that's over thirty million dollars in new debt service. So existing debt plus proposed debt, and the town's current debt levels won't go up at all. It'll stay kinda flat for the next couple of years, but then drop off again, which will allow the, the town to continue to improve capital projects, to improve, to improve the uh, the infrastructure of the town. Again, there's very few communities where this works as well as it does here. And again, the magic sauce is high bond rating, overall low level of interest rates, and a very aggressive amortization of existing debt service, which mitigates the, the proposed debt service. So I, I can't uh talk about the overall budget going forward, but what I can say is, based on this analysis here, that the debt service budget with these new projects approved will not go up at all from their current levels. And just look at the last slide here, just some summary points. Again, interest rates remain near all-time lows. Uh, the town's uh credit ratings from both Moody's and Standard and Poor's, two main rating agencies, are very high, and we're looking to get it one notch higher. And uh, again, the, the town's existing debt service is amortizing aggressively, and the town can issue the, the twenty-one point five million dollars of proposed new capital projects without debt going any higher than it currently is right now. If there's uh any questions or anything?
Yeah. First, um, so just by looking at this, this slide, looks like sixty million dollars is a magic number here, where we wanna keep things, debt, and then it stays where we want it, and that's, I guess, our goal as a town, to keep projects coming as long as they will that number?
Right, it, it's um, it, it's a town, a- after this twenty-one point five million, if there's more projects coming down the pipe, there's actually more capacity a few years out to actually add more debt without debt service going up higher.
Now, if, if interest rates do start to climb a little bit, does that mean that we should start borrowing a little bit less in the future to keep it below that number?
Well, that's a good point. If rates do go up significantly, that could impact uh this to, to some degree. But as, as that chart, that, that fifty-year chart I showed before, um, rates have been low for a while, they've been going low, people said they're gonna go higher, they, they haven't really gone up, you know, inflation's staying low. But the short answer to your question is yes, if interest rates start going up, that might kinda put a little bit more of a cap on this.
The only other question is, is our rating compared to other towns around us, are we, are we about equal to the towns around us, or are we a little better, or? I'm just more curious.
You're, on, on average, you're about equal, but there are a few, Brookfield's higher, Newtown's higher.
They're at triple A?
They're, they're triple A. And, and that's part of what we're looking, you know, the ironic thing is, um, in my opinion, the town's financial position is stronger than all those other communities. The last time we went for a bond rating, the state of Connecticut was falling off a cliff. The, the state just cut state aid to, to municipalities, and New Milford got hit hard, they had a million-dollar shortfall, you got whacked, right in the, the middle of the storm, and the rating agencies were very reluctant, they were downgrading everybody. So at that point in time, we were happy just to hold the rate. But now that things have kinda stabilized a little, and the town's looking at a surplus, the reserve levels are high, I think we got a good chance this summer to push that up. No guarantees, but uh, I'm hopeful, optimistic about it.
Any other questions for Barry? Dr. Muller?
Staying on this chart, if you would, the proposed debt service, so it looks like it's just a little over a million in twenty-twenty, then it goes to, looks like two and a quarter, two and a third. Um, and it increases, yeah, it probably stays about that for four years. Tell me, just explain why you question that, no, probably a little over a million to a little over two million from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one?
Right, um, so in um, in uh July of this year, if the town does bondage in July, typically a, a principal payment comes due a year later.
Oh, so that's the, the nineteen is in the twenty?
Right.
And the twenty's in the twenty-one?
Correct.
All right. Got it.
And, and I assumed that was very aggressive here, that, that all, that the bulk of that twenty-one million dollars of new projects would get bonded um uh in the next year or two. But in reality, i- it really depends on the town, how, how fast the town needs the money for those projects. I know the mayor talked about the rain, the rain seems like it's been coming forever, which slows the road projects that were approved several years ago, seems like it's slowing things down now. So it is possible that some of this make it deferred a little bit, depending on how, how fast the town could, could, could work on these projects.
Come on.
Yeah, you know, another point brought up, if, you know, interest rates go up, it costs us more to borrow money, but as interest rates go up, our investments should respond also. How do those two relate in, in our history? Have the money we made on our investments covered the borrowed money when rates go up or, I guess, go down? Because, I mean, right now, we're borrowing money at a low rate, but, I mean, we're making next enough on our investments, aren't we?
Right, right. Now, short, short rates have gone up a little bit. Now, the, the chart I showed was, was long-term rates. Um, short-term rates, last year, the Federal Reserve, which controls short-term rates, pushed them up higher. So you're probably earning a little bit more from this, your short-term investments.
Yeah, we're getting about two point three eight from our stiff investments.
So that, that, that helps to compensate a little bit as short-term rates go up. Um, but uh, I, 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 nobody really knows where interest rates are gonna be in the future. Nobody predicts. But, but, but based on what we've seen, um, I don't think a small increase in interest rates are really gonna impact this chart all that much. In order for that to really go above that, that solid black line, we need rates to go up uh dramatically, something, uh, you know, inflation has to start getting out of control, which would force, uh, push up uh rates quite a bit. A small uptick or two is really not gonna have a material impact on, on that graph.
Well, if the Fed increases rate, doesn't that keep inflation in control?
Well, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of factors going into place. The ironic thing is, the Fed controls short-term rates. So last year, they, they started increasing short-term rates. So um, if the town were to borrow on a short-term basis, say one year, like a bond anticipation note, the rate would be around two percent. But if you issue bonds for fifty or twenty years, that borrowing cost is about two point two-five or two point five percent. So there's not that much difference between borrowing long-term versus short-term.
And there's less risk.
And there's less risk, 'cause once you lock that in, you don't have to worry about where interest rates are gonna be, 'cause that, that's gonna be locked in for the next twenty years.
Sure.
And not to get into too much of an in degree, but with all of this um new tax law that happened, where people lost a lot of uh their deductibility with their, their mortgage income and, and deducting real estate taxes, we've seen a lot more demand from investors from tax-exempt municipal bonds. So there's a huge demand out there, and a lot of those investors want high-rated credits, communities that they know over the next fifteen or twenty years are gonna get their money back. So it's just, we've seen so much demand for these bond sales, and investors are coming in, pushing rigs down quite a bit. So the town, it can't be a better time than right now to issue these bonds and lock in at historically low rates.
One more question. I mean, the, I, I believe there's a state statute that says if you're borrowing for education for uh school buildings, it tends to be front-loaded, your debt service, and then it decreases. Is anybody familiar with that?
Correct. Usually it comes up at like year three or four, doesn't it? The school, the service unit, and it comes off.
Then it comes down.
No.
So, I mean, I think historically, we've been in that situation because we took such a huge debt for the new school and, and doing Sarah Monroe. I don't know if we've done other projects that way, but I think we've been front-loaded because of educational debt, haven't we?
Um, I, I think the payments have been consistent.
Kind of stable, yeah. It, it, it's really the roads, like, as I say, when these notes come due in, in July, the town's gonna pay down uh over a half million dollars, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Two point one million.
And then you're gonna borrow two, two point.
No, no.
Oh, out of the, out of the, right.
We'll hang that off in four years.
Well, long story short, the town is, is very conservative, you know, the state law allows a lot of flexibility. The worst example is the city of Hartford. The, that, those blue bars, where you see the town, if the town were to never borrow again, the debt would drop each year. In Hartford's case, if they never borrowed again, their debt went up like a spaceship, was the complete opposite of, of New Milford. Because you have a lot of flexibility when you issue bonds, you say, listen, we wanna borrow the money now, we'll let the next person pay for it, and you could push all that debt out, which I would never recommend, and the town historically has done just the opposite of that, which is very conservative, and, and that's why it works so well. I've been doing this for over twenty years, and, and believe me, it's very rare that you see a chart like this, where someone could come in and say, okay, we're gonna bond eight million dollars of already-approved projects, plus potentially twenty-one point five million of new projects. And even the mayor says, Barry, and Greg's like, whoa, this is gonna push debt all over, do some analysis. We did the analysis and say, well, we could structure it so that debt doesn't go up from its current levels. Ninety percent of other communities, if they're borrowing this amount of money, you would see that debt go up a lot higher than where it is right now. The magic sauce here is the existing runoff of the existing bonds, which is mitigating the impact, and the high bond rating and the low interest rates.
I couldn't agree more, and that's why Hartford's being bailed out by.
I know, it's unbelievable, we're all paying for that now.
But there couldn't be a better time to borrow, especially with the two and the five being inverted and historically a low ten-year notes right now, could be a perfect time to borrow if you were a municipality.
Exactly.
It's the perfect storm, and if you wanted to borrow money, the municipality, now would be the time. And even in the long rate, uh, the Fed probably is, they're talking about maybe a cut, maybe in later two thousand nineteen, early two thousand twenty.
Right.
So I don't see it really varying more than the core point anyway, either way, so, but this would be the time to do it, exactly. I agree with you.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
I make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution set forth in item seven A of the agenda and the exhibits annex thereto regarding the appropriation in borrowing for costs related to renovations and improvements to the New Milford Public Library.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Based on that, I make a motion that the town council approve and recommend an appropriation in the amount of eight point five million for renovations and improvements to the New Milford Public Library and an authorization to issue six point five million in bonds or notes to finance said appropriation. All is provided in the resolution that is set forth in the relevant document annexed to the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
I make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution set forth on item seven B of the agenda and the exhibits annex thereto regarding the appropriation and borrowing for costs related to roof repairs and improvements at various town buildings.
They already have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
I make a motion that the town council approve and recommend an appropriation in the amount of five million dollars for roof repairs and improvements at various town buildings and an authorization to issue five million in bonds or notes to finance said appropriation. All is provided in the resolution that is fully set forth in the relevant document annexed to the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Item seven C, I make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution set forth in item seven C of the agenda and the exhibits annex thereto regarding the appropriation and borrowing for costs related to paving, repairs, and other improvements of town roadways.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
I make a motion that the town council approve and recommend an appropriation in the amount of ten million dollars for paving, repairs, and other improvements to town roadways and an authorization to issue ten million in bonds or notes to finance said appropriation. All is provided in the resolution that is fully set forth in the relevant document annexed to the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Uh, item seven D, I move that we set a town meeting contingent on board a finance approval on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, at six PM in the E. Paul Martin Room of Town Hall pertaining to number one, library renovations, number two, town-owned building roofs, and number three, road construction.
Second. Any discussion?
It just says here, contingent on board.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Like to make a motion to designate the New Milford Economic Development Corporation as a development agency for the town of New Milford.
Second. We have a second? Ready?
Somebody second that?
Yep.
Okay.
This uh resolution and this uh arrangement was suggested by Ole Carr, and it was the subject of a meeting with the mayor of Ole and, and under the Economic Development Commission. The commission has, has uh certain authorities, and the corporation has certain authorities. The corporation has been re, uh, essentially re-upped, if you will, it's been, it's been modernized with some filings and some work necessary to bring it into the, to the parameter of the statute that authorizes a development agency. Ole did some research, and I've reviewed the research and done my own uh on behalf of the town concerning the ability of a corporation to adopt and act as the town's designated, essentially designated uh development agency. That authorize, uh, authorization does not, does not carry with it the powers of a legislature, but what it does do is it allows an agency under the auspices of the town to take action, recommend action, and negotiate matters uh in, in further as of economic development. The uh proposal as drawn, or the resolution as drawn, complies with the statutory schematic, and it allows, it, it essentially allows the, the, the corporation, the corporation for the New Milford Development, uh, New Milford Government Development, to act as the development agent of the town. Now, having said that, the, the corporation is gonna be authorized to prepare a development plan of certain projects that it might recommend, because there's a, a twelve-point requirement that it has to comply in order to provide this to the legislative body. So what this does is, it has an actual agency that is working on behalf of the town, but behalf of the town, but of course, subject to the authority of the legislative body in order to develop the economic plan of New Milford, to create one and to follow through on it. There's an entire statutory scheme in chapter 132 of the statutes that really is pretty aggressive, but there's always a rain on it because you have to come back to the legislative body. Included in that is a recommendation of eminent domain, should that become necessary. That language in the statute is required because of the case that you might have heard of years ago, well, Kelo against Delante. In that case, there was a taking for private development that would have enhanced the town's economic viability. That fell through, by the way. That never, all that to do went to spring court, and it never, it never came to pass. But that eminent domain power, of course, is vested in the town, not in the agency. So I don't want you to think you're giving them the power to take property. You don't. First of all, you don't defund them. But the reality is that it frees up an agency, an agency of the town, in order to create economic plans and follow through with them. I was a scribbler of the resolution for this, but as to whether or not this is something that the town should embark upon, I believe that the mayor and the Economic Development Corporation are probably on the same page. I obviously have no opinion on it. I'm your lawyer. I'm not a policymaker. But it seems progressive, yet it's in keeping with what's going on with the other towns and cities. Shelton is a beautiful one, and it works very, very well, and I've explored that. And this could follow that model very easily. So I'll answer any questions that you might have that are legal.
This is an independent agency that works independently, but where does the buck stop with this?
Buck stops right here.
Okay, fair enough. Alright.
Don't forget, the reality is that they do nothing without money.
Okay, alright.
The fact is, is they need appropriations to do this. They can't overrule a legislative body, and they can't overrule a planning commission. You can't even do this without a planning commission. You have to have a planning commission. And that's for all the checks and the balances that are.
Well, that's, that's the trick, checks and balances. Thank you, Randy.
You're not gonna authorize, in this particular model, as a town attorney, I would not recommend that you authorize them to execute any contracts that bind the town, although they can bind the town to plans that they create and give you.
Okay, okay.
I'd like to ask Karen Pollard, she's our economic development director, to come up for a minute, and.
Thank you.
As our economic development director, Karen, if you could kinda give us kinda your thoughts on the Economic Development Corporation acting as a development agency for the town of New Milford?
That is something that I, in my previous experience, have worked on before, having both a commission that informs on policy matters and having the economic development authority to implement such plans that the town would deem appropriate. So again, it is just as the attorney said, there is no authority granted that is free from coming back to this board in order to get a final approval. And again, financially, the body is not independent without some source of revenue, so.
Thank you. Have any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the road closure for the annual Teddy Bear Festival on June 1st, put on by the Women's Club of Greater New Milford, for the closure of two crossover streets on Main Street. One is between Church Street and Bank Street, and two is between the north and midsection of the Green.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
If you have any questions.
What's the time?
Shannon, the town president.
The time?
From 10 to 3.
Walter?
One of my favorite slogans is, when in despair, hug your bear.
You may use that.
I just know, I'm always cognizant because I know where the station in Milford wouldn't clear out as fast as the businesses in the Main Street area like you do, so that's the one thing that you gotta be careful of. Make sure you get out of there so that traffic can start flowing, get business back normal. But it's a great event. My kids, they're now over in college and beyond. They loved it when they were younger. How long has it been going on now?
It's our 23rd year.
It's awesome.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Shannon. Next.
I move to close the roads of Bank Street for the Thursday concert series put on by Bank Street Investments on June 20th, July 18th, August 15th, with rain dates of June 21st, July 19th, and August 16th, for the time period of 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Regarding the request of Husatonic River Brewing, I propose the approval of the closure for the Husatonic River 5K on Saturday, August 10th, 2019, with a rain date of the following day, August 11th, 2019, to close Youngsfield Road between Bridge Street and Patriots Way and the sidewalk on Bridge Street over the river from 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM.
Chris is here.
I move to approve the closure.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, can I just, I'm assuming, Chris, you're here for this ride here. Oh, hey. Oh, I don't trust him. Yeah, just, can you just tell me how the course is gonna work and how it's gonna finish?
I actually have a map of the course if you.
Yeah.
Can I just get your name?
Brian Vanderhaid.
Thank you.
So you're starting?
Starting in the field behind the brewery.
Okay, so you have a mile of it for things to thin out before they cross the bridge?
Cross the bridge, turn left on Youngsfield Road, actually go down the path, which runs parallel to Youngsfield Road, all the way down to Patriots Way, and then that's kind of a turnaround point, but then on the way back, they're gonna go through the outside of the field there.
And you have approval from the state to run?
Yep.
On the sidewalk?
Yep.
And you have a sign-off from the chief and from the traffic authority?
Yep.
Already, which is in your packets? Any recommendations?
What's that?
No. No.
No property parking?
Nope.
Any other questions? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the Memorial Day Road closure for a temporary closure of Main Street, the southern crossover over Main Street, the westbound portion of Bridge Street, Railroad Street, and Bennett Street for the setup, duration, and breakdown of the Memorial Day Parade approximately from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Monday, May 27, 2019, noting that an extra half hour is added to the normal timeframe to allow the color guard to march to Veterans Bridge to honor the Navy and Merchant Marine veterans.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Walter?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everybody.